We'll call order the regular meeting, the Argus School Board at 7:00. And if you'll stand, Jennifer is a great place to start us off, would be pleasure.
Play both directions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Followed with a moment of silence. Okay, we'll continue with communication from patrons. Anyone who'd like to address the board? Okay, moving on to item number four, recognition, and I think I'll let Mr. Spiker lead on this. Some happy news.
Yes, very good news. Board, we have Mr. Medich and Mr. Art with us, and we'd like to recognize Mr. Art. We have some other things planned for the future, but for now we'll just say, "Mr. Art, congratulations. Outstanding job to you and your students." The Midwest College Board, which represents 13 states, recently honored Mr. Art, I think it was Cleveland, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Where you were at, you and Mr. Medich, as Teacher of the Year for 13 states for AP. They were just sort of blown away about how this small school district can do everything that it's doing. And that's a tremendous honor for Mr. Art, for Mr. Medich, but for our students, for Argus Schools and the Argus community. You think about 13 states, and here's Argus doing the job. And so, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Mr. Art, I'm just amazed by your God-given abilities to teach students, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Do you want to explain a little bit? I think Mr. Art had to give a speech.
Yeah.
I know you were excited about that.
It was not recorded, thank you.
Well, you don't have to give the speech, but you want to start and tell us about the experience, was I a little bit, and share that a bit?
Sure. Being involved with the Notre Dame AP Tippin program, I believe they nominated me, correct? And then, experience was wonderful. We went down there. It was the College Board, their Midwest Regional Forum, so they had keynote speaker, the vice president of the College Board, so we got to learn more information about our AP program. I just want to thank Mr. Medich and everybody involved. They got us involved with that Notre Dame AP Tippin program. So that's where all of us AP teachers here at Argus, we got all of our resources and instructional strategies, and of course, none of this would be possible without the hard work of our students, you know? Just keep thinking to myself, and I remind even my students, you know, currently, that past achievement does not guarantee future success. So I still got 15 kids in the classroom that I hope we can do well on this year's exam, so.
And a few months to keep working.
Yep.
To accomplish it. Mr. Medich, the two of you took the trip to Cleveland and came back the same day as you got the board. Anything you'd want to share?
No, I mean, yes, there's plenty of tools that have been put in place with the AP Tippin program, but it takes dedicated professionals to actually translate that to success for students. Mr. Art is very dedicated to students, into the school, and he's a model teacher, I wish we'd be clowned.
So do I. And we would if we could. I haven't figured that one out yet. No, it's just outstanding. And the questions I get from other superintendents and all over, you guys get too, "Well, how does a little school district like Argus accomplish these things?" And I said, "It's great people working hard, but it's students, it's staff, it's community, it's support, it's a lot of people, but Mr. Art, you're the leader." And we sure appreciate that and your accomplishments, it's well deserved.
Thanks.
Thanks again. And thanks for coming to board meetings, so we can talk about you. I know that feels so comfortable.
Yeah, it's a very humbling experience.
I understand. Just keep up the good work.
Thank you again. Item five, we have some minutes to approve, both from the regular meeting on February 11th, followed by the executive session February 11th. Remember right, during an ice storm?
I warned you of that part of the minutes.
So do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
A motion.
Thank you. Motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve those two sets of minutes. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote. Okay, item six, we have personnel changes.
Patty, do you have a copy of those personnel? She's catching up with our minutes here. We'll get them up here, and then we can consider a board. But while you're doing that, I'd like to introduce somebody to you that's coming up. So, Board, we're recommending to you a new junior, senior high school counselor. She's been here for several months, working on a table's maternity leave, but we're recommending for our full-time guidance personnel. Beth Schmaltz, Beth is here. She comes to us from John Glenn, was a counselor there about 24 years, I get that right? Language arts teacher also, by profession. Beth has done a wonderful job during maternity leave, and we're excited to recommend her as our permanent, regular junior, senior high school counselor. In fact, I was just meeting with them after school today. We've got lots of ideas for the future. Beth, welcome. Anything you'd like to say to the board, or?
I'm very happy for the opportunity, and I know I've told Mr. Medich, and I've mentioned it to teachers as well. I'm amazed at the things that happened here at Argus. I went to the musical yesterday, outstanding performance by those kids, and all the adults that were part of that. I've just been very, very impressed with what I've seen so far, and I'm very happy to be a part of it now. I appreciate it.
Great. Well, we're glad to have you here, as the board. I would certainly recommend Beth's employment as our junior, senior high school guidance counselor. Welcome, Beth.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two employments, one, two resignations, and some volunteer positions on the screen. I think that's it, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay, so we can do this all at once, if anybody would like to make a motion to that effect?
I move personnel changes A through C, be approved, as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further discussion or questions concerning the personnel changes? Okay, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Those personnel changes have been approved. Item seven, Argus Summer Kickoff Festival, is asking for approval to use the parking areas.
Yeah, that's June 21 and 22, Board, and it's a yearly thing. They use our parking lots for the festival and just keep all the insurance issues in order. We really need the board's approval to do it, as we've done in the past. We'd recommend approval for June 21 and 22 for the summer kickoff festival parking.
A motion?
I'll move to accept the part.
Angie, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And any questions or discussion?
I'm assuming we're still going to let the high school groups collect parking and share the piece?
Yes. Same as traditionally, yes. Good question.
Okay, anything further? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, good. Item eight, the Argus Summer Academy.
Board, this is something we started a year ago, where it's really staff development for our teachers during the summer. And we're proposing the schedule for July 22nd, 23rd, and 25th, July 29th, 30th, and August 1st, so it'll be six days, six sessions, six full days or 12 half-days. And for teachers that volunteer to attend, $50 for a half-day session, $100 for a full-day session, teachers can earn up to $300 doing this. But it is staff development during the summer, which is so much more efficient than doing it during the school year, where we have to hire subs, and then it's not as good education for our kids. And we had over 90% of our teachers attend this a year ago. It was very cost-effective and very productive, so we would recommend these dates for the Argus Summer Teacher Academy for summer of '19. And topics will be detailed later. We're still developing topics as we work with the teachers, but the thing I'd sent out in your packet has some suggested topics on it. It'll be things like classroom management, differentiation, reading, using technology to hand instruction, using Apple TV, teaching Indiana State standards, using student data to drive instruction, meeting the needs of depressed or students where always an issue trying to deal with kids that are really struggling and that, and trying to give our teachers some more tools to deal with our students. So we'd recommend approval of this for the summer.
Okay, do we have a motion to that effect?
I have a motion.
Thank you. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? You already answered the one question I had about what kind of a rate we had last year, how many attended. You already said about 90%.
Yeah, and I was pleasantly pleased. We had a great turnout.
And these count towards their professional credits?
Yes, and it can count towards their professional credits, get their license renewed, and we certify them for that. And it's just very cost-effective doing that way, because we're actually paying our teachers to do this, instead of paying for subs.
Right.
And gives teachers out to it. Doesn't cost us any more money, but it's better education, because our teachers are in the classroom, and our teachers are trained for the school year start, so it's a win-win. Yeah, good point.
I just want to point out, I like the mental health course. It's probably not something they get all the time. We're all focused on instruction, 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 and I think that, you know, a guidance counselor can't address all the mental health needs. The teachers in the classroom see it too, so I think that would be a really good choice.
Our teachers realize this is a huge topic, and our kids do too, and we just need to be aware when kids are struggling, and so we tune in and hopefully provide some resources for them, because any given day, we have kids that are struggling, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote on the Summer Teacher Academy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Number nine, approval of summer hours.
Board, we started this a year ago, too, looking at a four-day work week during the summer. Main reason for this, converge, conserve energy costs. Basically, we're going to work from Monday through Thursday. Hour employees will work the same number of hours. We're going to work four 10s instead of five eights. But we're going to turn the electricity, not the electricity, but turn the air conditioning off for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Saves us a lot of money. And I had a few questions last year about it. "Well, I'm planning to come in Friday. Can you turn on the air conditioning in my room or my office?" I said, "Well, it doesn't really work that way. You're welcome to come in, but it might be open the windows, and you're welcome to be here." But the whole idea is to save those energy costs, and it did make a major difference. And I surveyed the staff, the non-certified staff, what they thought about it, and they were overwhelming, and thought it was a good idea, and they appreciated. So we'd approve doing it and run from June 7th to July 19th. And we want to stop that schedule the last week in July and getting into August, as we're gearing up for the new school year. It'd be for seven Fridays that we run for. So we recommend approval of that for another year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the summer hours?
I'll move to approve the summer hours.
Chris, do we have any second?
A second.
Thank you. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes live vote. Okay, item number 10, Megan Hughes has, would like to do a survey of an interest level for a spring break trip in 2021.
Yes, she has talked to Mr. Medich and I about proposing a trip to Belize during spring break of 2021. Well, it's hard to say 2021, not that far away, though. This would be the same organization that we're planning the spring break trip through this spring break. But Board, what we're just asking, you would give permission for a survey. It would not be approval for the trip, but to see if there's any interest or not. She put some of the things that they want to do, the educational, cultural experiences, visitor chocolate farms, sustainable farming practices, banana plantation, looking at the ancient civilization, man ruins, and all activities that fit into our school curriculum, and see if there's an interest for students to travel to Belize during spring break. I think these types of opportunities for our kids are important. If they're interested in doing it, great. If they're not, that's fine too, but I would recommend just conducting the survey, and then if there's an interest, we'll come back to you to ask for permission to proceed. If there's not an interest, stop there. But I hate to put it out there without you approving it. Yes, they can survey it, so try to answer any questions, or Mr. Medich can answer any questions. But we both map what we think that'd be appropriate for, to survey the students.
Are we still thinking in every other year type of opportunity?
Yeah, so, yeah, I think with the volume of kids we have every year is a lot.
How many are going to Europe, do we?
Do you know how many, Mr. Medich? I know you're planning to go.
I thought 12 or around 50, but that's some variance.
15, 50?
50 by 0. But I think that's not just students, that's...
That's adult students.
Right.
I think that's around the total group.
But that's a big group.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So there certainly was interest in doing it this time. We'll see just where the community's at and students are at, because one of the things, if they decide they want to do it, it takes a while to fundraise. And we don't want to wait till 2021 before we start considering it, so kids can plan ahead, parents a couple of years. That's sort of the focus of their kid in high school, to do something like this.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the interest survey?
A motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Mr. Medich is out there, so any questions?
Has Mrs. Highs been to Belize, or does she just have an inf?
I don't believe so, no.
I wonder.
She's talked to several schools that have done this through this tour company, and the tour company's been there, so we know people have had positive experiences. And this tour company comes highly rated, does a lot of local high schools and that, so. And we'll certainly know more after our spring break trip, coming up very shortly. Mr. Medich will be ready to report to us, along with others. Your bag's back, Mr. Medich?
Oh, yeah, for a week now.
What company is that?
Is it EF?
EF.
EF.
EF Tours. I think Mr. Peet.
You've experienced with that company before?
Years and years ago, took a student group with EF.
EF. Yeah, he's definitely taken student groups over the years.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we need a vote to approve the interest survey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, approval of the surplus equipment online auction.
That's a mouthful.
I know. Let you take it from there.
Board, we have a lot, and let me see, I'll say this sort of sarcastically, a lot of treasures stored away in our storage room that I'm sure somebody would like to buy from us. So we'd like to have an online auction, and we've started a list. There'll be more pages of it. But things from like tables, or cabinets, or chairs, or Panasonic TV, and Magnavox TV, but they're all surplus items that we're never going to use. And truthfully, they don't have a lot of value, but they may be a treasure to somebody. So we'd like to put these online for people to bid on, and there'll be a bid ticket online where that can be filled out and submitted. We'll have minimum bids on things, so most things will be a dollar, the minimum bid, so you see how valuable they are. And then, if it doesn't get a bid, then we can legally dispose of it, since it was bought with tax dollars. But we'll put the list online, and we'd like to have this auction from April 22nd to May 3rd, so it'd be available for anyone that wanted to, to bid on items. And then on those days, from 3:30 to 4:30, right after school for one hour, anybody can come in and look at the treasures, instead of just seeing the list online. And so then they can know exactly what they're bidding for, and item number and that. So we'd like to have your approval to run this auction from April 22nd to May 3rd, on surplus items, with the intent that we will sell everything we can. It will not be a moneymaker, but we'll dispose of getting our storage rooms uncluttered. And then anything it isn't bid on, we'll either properly dispose of, or recycle, or whatever, but then we have the right to dispose of it in a way. Yeah, we're just overwhelmed with obsolete stuff that we need to, right, Mr.? Every room we open, it's just full stuff that will probably never be used. But if it can be a treasure to somebody, we'd certainly like them to have it. So I would recommend having the online auction, it'll run from April 22nd through May 3rd, and people will be, it'll all be online. We'll publicize this and put it out to everybody, and then they can come in and look at these treasures if they want to bid. If they don't want to bid, fine. If they do want to bid, fine. We'd like to have your permission to dispose of these surplus items.
Okay, do we have a motion to that effect?
I move to accept the surplus option.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Karen, any discussion or questions?
Who's going to manage these people for this hour?
We are going to work, right? One of the guys is sitting right back here in that corner. Andy and I have talked about it with Charlie, and we're going to manage it through the maintenance custodial department. Andy and I are sort of heading this up. And Mr. Chicky, our technology coordinator, is heading it up with all the technology. Because when we sell technology, we'll make sure the hard drives are light and all this, so none of our privacy information is out there. And, you know, we have really, if somebody really needs a copy machine that doesn't work, that would be a great buy, I think, for somebody that's really handy, you can repair.
Make a boat anchor out of it?
Yeah, we can do that. If you want to write the right number down, we'll be glad to sell it to you. There's an example.
Are there any, is there anything in there that the steam classes could use, and that tear apart?
We will have our staff, and we have had our staff, but we will, again, if they get first opportunity, or any activities we have, if you can use this, we're not going to get rid of it, so if it has value. Three-legged chairs with one leg that can't be repaired, and stuff like that, I mean, that's probably, if you need a three-legged chair, we'd probably sell you one. But things like that, they're not real valuable stuff. But there again, if somebody can use it, we'll keep it. Good question.
Yes, and they'll be all housed in one big general area?
We're trying to get it into one area. In fact...
That might be a challenge.
Andy and the staff are working on that now, and technology's working on that, getting it to one area, so it can be viewed by the public. So that'd be a recommendation, that we establish the dates, and we have an online auction for our valuable surplus.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. April 22nd through May 3rd, Monday to Friday.
Yep.
Item 12, construction report.
Board, it's been quite a few months I've come to this. We're ready to close out our construction project from last year. We got the thing from the architects and the contractors. All the warranties have been in, all of our manuals are here. Everything is done, so we can release our retainage. And I recommend we release our retainage, which has already been earned. We've just been holding it until they turned everything in. Did all the punch list. So it's $82,904.32 that we've been holding, until they did all the final work. It's been certified done, so I would recommend your approval to release the final payment to close out the project, which is good news. Almost a year it took.
Is there a motion to make this final payment?
Someone.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Okay, any questions or discussion, anything concerning this, any concerns? Nice to see it come to a close.
I do have one number to give the board. Out of this whole project, over $800,000 project, we came in $13,917.91 under budget. That's always a nice term to be able to say after a year's time, we're $13,000 and change under budget. Really good job, Board. Everybody, Andy, all the staff, a lot of hard work went into that, but good project. All right, but I just want to share that one number, that we were under budget.
That's great. That's always good.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Signify with an aye? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 13, instructional report.
Oh, yeah, I want to, construction report, I got one more for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved on. Thank you.
But I want to talk a little bit about drainage. And I gave the board a map, so they could look a little closer, but the community can look at the screen back there. Let me get orientated here, but let me see if my laser pointer will work. Maybe, maybe not. My充电 battery.
It's on.
There it is. Right in this area, you see all these lines here, that's a hill, coming into our playground right here. And this is where we're flooding. When we get heavy rains, this area floods. There's some asphalt back here. And this area, when it floods, then runs into our tunnels underneath the building, and runs into classrooms along here, and we got a preschool classroom, and several other classrooms where it runs in and floods. So we've been looking religiously, trying to figure out what's the best solution to this. Well, first of all, we cleaned out all of our manholes covers on this parking lot, and this parking lot, and over here, there's like six of them over here, drainage areas. And that helped a little bit, but really, those areas don't hook up to anything. They're drywells. Now, some, we met with the town, and met with our survey people and our architects. There is somebody remembering that there used to be a drainage tile that ran under the school, out to the manhole cover in our parking lot here. But no one can quite remember where that's at, and it's not on any map. We did find something that's potentially there, so we have commissioned a company to run cameras down all these manholes that do have drains out of them, and to see if they're blocked or collapsed. One of them was listed 1908, that went around this way. Well, I would about imagine that clay tile from 1908 is probably not in too good a shape. I think some of our farmers understand that clay tile doesn't last a long time, but not forever. So we've studied this really long and hard, and there really is three options, Board. One option is to bore under the school and drain it out into this parking lot. That's not the most cost-effective option, but that is an option. And when you bore it into school, we got to get under those tunnels under the school. The other option is to take it clear on around, out around this way, clear out off the map. There's a marsh out there that we can drain it to, but the town doesn't have the capacity for us to hook on the town drains. So that's a lot of drainage heading out that way. The third option, which appears to be the best option, is start here, and there's a big hill here, as you come around the corner of the school, but come around this way, and come right out to here, and the town has a major drain right here in our parking lot, that the town would let us hook onto. The big thing is, we would have to either bore or dig a pretty deep trench right through here. We've had contractors look at it, and they think that's doable, and probably the most cost-effective option. And so we're getting prices on those things, but that would get rid of the surface water, because right now, these drains that are coming off our roof, they don't go anywhere. And when we get heavy rains, it blows those drains apart, and then floods this whole playground. And then that water sits there and seeps under our foundation of the school, into our tunnels. And if you go back... And if you go back there, there is erosion, severe erosion around our foundation back in here. It's got to be dealt with. And we really don't want to deal with some other things with parking lots and all that till we figure out this drainage. Because then that makes, you hate to have a new parking lot and have to tear it up to get drainage right. You got to get drainage right first. But the contractor thought we could either dig a big trench there, which we'd have to cover till we get the pipe in and all that. They don't want kids falling in it. It has to be this summer while we're not in school, because that might be 12, 14 feet deep to get through that hill. Or another option is to bore the pipe underneath it, under the hill. But as we talk to the contractors, more cost-effective than putting it under the school and a lot more cost-effective than doing all this. So we're getting evidence on this. But what we're doing is, we're going to run a video in these lines here that the town says we can hook onto to make sure those lines aren't damaged or collapsed. And so that's the next report we're waiting on, to make sure those lines are good before we hook up to them. If we get that, I foresee coming back and looking at this route right here to get rid of that water. And then we can hook up our roof drains on the back of the school back here to that and get that water out of there. But that is what the architects and the engineers are looking at now and our survey people. Andy, I forget the day we met, a couple of weeks ago, it was snowing and it was cold out. We spent pretty well an afternoon out there with the town, with the contractors, with the architect, with the engineer. Anything else that you remember on that story that we talked about? We talked about a lot of options.
Well, they were puzzled why the original addition where the drains came in went into, under the school, because that's just a recipe for future problems in which we are now-
It does bother me with the-
We're now facing them right now. They said that once they are in our excavating, and they're running the camera system for us, and once they give us the report, we'll forward it to them. And then they can actually see where the pipes go and the conditions. And they said that if there's already pipes existing and they're good shape and it's just one corner or elbow that's clogged, they might be able to do some temporary stuff to help us until we get a future plan that works. But the big thing is, we have to get the water out ASAP because it's causing or will be causing future damage with the foundation of the school. You know, it's a lot easier to fix a drain than it is to try to correct a-
This quarter of the school, they're worried about foundation if we don't correct it. And we don't have any damage yet, but we've got to resolve that water issue.
So we have to have it scoped and we'll have to blow through it first. They'll have to blow through it first to make sure it's unclogged and then scope with the camera through it to find out where it leads to and its condition. That is a necessity. We have no way out and around it or we're at a standstill. So to not act and do at least that much would be-
Lord, we do have funds in our 2019 budget to do this, but we got to handle it. Till all the experts sort of agree that this is the best solution, then we can bring you a proposal. But I just wanted to mention tonight to show you the different options they're looking at. They spent a lot of time on this, working with the town and tried to recreate lost drains and things that have happened in the past. The town isn't real sure of, we're not real sure of, the county's real not real sure of. But trying to find, but some things happen, because this has gotten worse in the last few years back here. So some drain somewhere is not, is collapsed or not working. And how do we resolve that is the issue, so. But actually, the back of the school actually slopes towards the school. So all that water runs right up against the school and has to be resolved. And so that's a major focus of this summer on the exterior building, getting that drainage resolved. Any questions or comments? I just wanted to bring it to your attention tonight. I'm hoping by April, we'll have a proposal for you is the best way to go. But if I was predicting, it'll be going around the corner of the school and hooking up to our parking lot on this side here. And they looked about how much, there's a fence line there, a property line, and school, and there's like 12 feet right there. And they said, yes, there's room for us to get through there. Well, that's good news, so without upsetting the foundation of the school is going to go through there. But there's not a lot of room there between the property line and the school.
If there is that tile there in the back, will they take it out?
They haven't given us a recommendation, but if they can repair it, that'd be their first choice to get it working again if it's just collapsed in a certain place. So hopefully to get a report of that whole drainage. Because yeah, if we could get it working both ways, it'd be an ideal situation. Because that's a lot of school and the drainage to go around. And there's a big hill behind us there, but other than that, we're pretty well flat. It's pretty hard to move water from that, that point on.
Can we, do you take any action on that?
No, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we will be bringing a proposal of a resolution of this, okay?
And I apologize for going ahead. I skipped over that, tried to go ahead on you.
No, that's good.
Okay. Jenny kept, Jenny kept me honest there. Okay, now, item 13, instructional report.
Yeah, Board, on the instructional report, we have the iLearn testing schedule that I put in your packet. iLearn is a totally different type of test than iStep. iStep's going away, iLearn's coming to all the schools in Indiana. And iLearn is totally different. iStep had very limited timelines for kids to work on. You have 30 minutes to do those tests, not 30 minutes and 10 seconds. But now iLearn is different. There's no timeline, so. And the kids can work longer, some kids will finish sooner. And so, and you, you work with kids in small groups. You get them in different testing schedules. So we're working at setting up a testing schedule. And we're looking to start testing on Monday, April 29th in the junior high and in the elementary. This will be grades three to eight that we're testing on. And we're looking at the, it'll run about May 7th, 8th, or 9th to finish the English and the math. Then we have science and social studies on May 14th, 15th. We will be putting all this on our website and sending it to parents. But several other things we're going to do during the testing times, we're going to offer a free breakfast to all our students in order to get them the best testing situation possible. Right now, our free and reduced kids get free breakfast. But we're going to offer it to all our kids because we just know the kids perform better on high stakes testing, but something in their tummy, no matter what their socioeconomic status is. And so we're going to offer a free breakfast at that time, and we've got that set up. And in order to make sure we get our junior high school in the best testing situation possible, we're going to do the math and language arts the first few hours of the day. Actually, our high school will have two-hour delay on those days. So when the high school comes later on, they will not miss any of their classes. We'll run a seven-period day, like on a two-hour delay schedule. But we'll have two hours to focus just on our junior high kids for testing. And we can get, use our summer high school, so many of our high school teachers teach also junior high and that, and they can't run the schedule while we're testing. So high school kids, they can either choose to come two hours later on those, that day, or if they come at the regular time, that's fine. We will put them in a study hall and we will take care of them. But it's amazing, high school kids tend to find a way to delay if they can delay coming to school for a couple of hours. It'll only be for a few days.
What about your elementary kids that aren't testing yet?
They will, but they have self-contained classrooms. They'll be in their self-contained classrooms.
So my two will be fighting.
Yes, I agree. And your, and your family is not going to make it real happy, is it? One yes, one no.
Yep.
But by rotating the high school kids, you have to have all your teachers. And we pulling these teachers out to test junior high. And in a small school district, we're sharing teachers. Where if you have a separate junior high or a separate high school, you don't get it. So a lot of junior, senior high schools get caught in that position. So they have to delay the high school schedule. But in order not to skip any high school classes, we'll run a two-hour delay schedule so they will have all classes. It'll just start after the testing of the junior high kids those days.
For about a week, a little?
Yeah, it'll be, it's actually going to be six days. But there'll be makeups at other times, but we won't run that for the makeup. So, but we'll put all this on the website. We'll send all this out to parents. Now that it starts till end of April, so we got a month on this. But just wanted the board to be aware that we, this high stakes testing, we will interrupt the schedule for a few days. Beth has been working hard on this. Mr. Mette is working hard. It's grades three to eight, and then we'll be doing it. And it will, total different situation. A kid may take an hour and a half to do this test, and another kid may take 20 minutes. And so you, that makes the scheduling that totally different than what iStep was. And it's going to be, the whole state of Indiana is going to operate this way, so we're trying to set up the schedule.
Have you talked to those superintendent? Are they doing a two-hour delay for their high schools?
Quite a few of them are. And I've even seen, I know many junior, senior high schools have done this in the past, even for iStep. It's pretty common. Not common for Argus, but it'll give us a better testing situation. Well, like, let's excuse, Mr. Armey's sitting here. He teaches an eighth grade class, but he also teaches high school. But to test that eighth grade class of math, he can't be in the high school schedule. He's got to be pulled out of it. So now I can't, I can't hire enough subs and run the schedule. Mr. Mette can, so just make better order. And it'll give our junior, senior high school kids the very best chance they can to maximize their scores. It won't disadvantage the high school, because we're still going to have those classes. After the two-hour testing, we will run that complete schedule and they'll have every class, so. This is sort of news I saw an eighth grader there light up when he heard that information on free breakfast.
So the high school is going to run, run, or they get a two-hour study hall?
Yep. Or they could be helping out here in the library or somewhere, or, or they can choose to stay home, whatever they want to do.
I was thinking, how many do we have riding buses that would? Well, you have a bus for the two-hour delay, right?
We'll run a double shift for those few days. So all drivers, all riders-
So if they want to come in on the regular time, they can, if they want to take the delay, we'll be prepared for them. We'll meet whatever the needs of the parents are and the kids. In the past, I've heard a lot of this, and I can almost tell you what will happen, but we'll make it possible for everybody.
I didn't realize there was a-
Yeah.
Double bus route.
Well, since it's a two-hour delay-
We'll run a two-hour delay-
Elementary and junior high would be dropped off at normal time, which would be 7:40 or 7:50, depending if they come in for breakfast, which it seems they're all coming in for breakfast. So it'd be 7:40.
We're going to feed everybody.
The buses would come back out to the routes and go the route again and pick up any high school student that wasn't on the bus in the morning. So, so basically, they try to pass Jen's house twice.
And Mr. Mette, we haven't had a chance to talk to the teachers about this. Is that the details we're telling you first? But Mr. Mette and I have been working on it, and Beth's been working on it. We'll take care of the details and make sure it's taken care of. Just let you know that this testing is going to look different than iStep. And this is the state of Indiana, or is dictating this, so it will be different. And this will be all online, no pencil and paper.
So will your high school teachers also take two-hour delay, or will they-
No, they're going to be testing junior high kids.
Even if they are not? So they're like proctors or whatever?
Yes, we're going to get these kids in small groups where we can, we can keep them focused.
And do they know that yet, or this is-
No. I've uncorked a lot of things. I knew lots of questions to be asked, but give us a chance to meet with staff and work out. We're a month away. But I wanted to mention it here, so you know what we're, but we've been working on it pretty hard. It's just a whole different way of thinking of things when you don't have time limits on a test. You can't run schedules. Yeah. Good, all good thoughts. But we want to make sure our grade three through grade eight have the best opportunity to take that test and do their very best on. Really important for our school grades.
Right, so this iLearn is going to correlate to the school grade, just like I said?
Yes, it will definitely be our school grades, a big portion of it. And truth is, our junior high kids, our middle school kids, they determine our high school's school grade with this test. Not saying that's real accurate, but there's a lot of truth to that, isn't there, Mr. Mette? Big portion of it. High schoolers determine things like graduation rate and those type of things. But this test definitely factors into that school grade.
And so what are our sophomores going to take then? They still are taking iStep?
iStep, last time for iStep. Then it goes on. So iStep is fading into the sunset after how many years. It's going to be iOr. Okay.
We don't need action on that, then, since it shows a bow?
We labeled that way. I really don't think you do. We will follow the state's testing schedule. I just wanted to let you know, we're going to publicize it and get it out to people. There'll always be kids with makeups and all that information.
And then item B says a video, iRead 3?
Do you have the video? I think it's a three-minute video that we're going to put on our website for parents, because this is totally new for parents, too. And we can put the video up here and we'll show it to you.
iRead 3 is an assessment given to third-grade students in Indiana. If you have a third-grade student, you may be wondering, why do students take iRead 3? What does iRead 3 measure? What happens if my student does not pass iRead 3? And what can I do to prepare my student for this test? iRead 3 is a test that measures students' ability to read and their ability to understand what they have read. Research shows that the ability to read and understand text is important for student success. In kindergarten through second grade, students are primarily learning how to read. Beginning in fourth grade, students must be able to read to learn. Because reading to learn is such an important skill, the Indiana General Assembly passed a law requiring that all students in grade three take a test to measure their reading skills. The test, iRead 3, measures reading standards from grade one to grade three and checks to make sure students are ready to make the change to reading to learn. If students pass the iRead 3 assessment, they show that they are ready to read to learn. If they do not pass the assessment, the school is required to give the student extra help and support in their reading skills. Each local school creates their own plan to provide this support. So talk to your student's teacher or principal to find out more about the support offered at your school or visit the IDELE website for requirements. Do you want to help your student prepare for iRead 3? Best operation is strong instruction based on Indiana academic standards. You can also take a sample test to help students get used to the types of questions on the assessment and the tools available in the online system. If you want to understand even more details about the content that's measured on the assessment and how the questions are written, you can look at the test blueprints and item specifications. The Office of Student Assessment is always happy to provide you with any support that you need. Contact us if you have any questions about iRead 3, and we will work together to ensure that all Indiana students achieve the reading skills they need for future success.
The state of Indiana's put that out for all parents, so we will link that on our website for our third graders. If the third grade doesn't, third grader does not pass iRead 3, then we are required to provide remediation to two-degree services in which we put them into a summer program and during, you pass the summer school, and then they take the test again. And usually, we're about 100% effective after the remediation, getting them through the test. If not, the state law requires that they are given additional help or they're retained. Well, retention's not usually our first mode of operation. That does not usually help the kid much. So we want the kid to be successful. So we will do everything we can to get the kid through the iRead 3 exam. So that's a huge thing for our third graders. It really evaluates our pre-K program core through grade three on teaching a child basic reading skills. So that's a huge hurdle for our kids. And then after that comes the iLearn. Base on top of that. So one, you'd be aware of that test is coming, too. So a lot of pressure on our kids with this high stakes testing. We want to work with parents not to put undue pressure on them, but just encourage them to perform at their very best and give it their very best shot, so. That will be coming. And with iLearn and iRead, completely new terms for the state of Indiana, that's, will be the testing this spring. Bonnie, that's sort of my instructional report, unless there's questions.
The iRead 3 then precedes the iLearn? Are there, or is it at the same time?
There's a gap there. I'm trying to think the exact date.
Well, it is ahead of it, though.
Yeah, it's, yeah. There's a gap, but they, yeah, they get hit pretty hard. Takes quite a bit of instruction time away from us. But it is high stakes and does evaluate our schools.
Okay. Okay, item 14- Okay, item fourteen, approval of donations. We have two donations to approve, one from Craig Welling, is that, should that be Welling, or is that right, Welling?
It's a, it's a gentleman, his name is Craig Welling.
Okay, that is correct, okay. And also waste management, so Craig Welling and waste management.
We recommend you accept those donations, which we appreciate very much.
Is there a motion to accept the donations?
I have a motion.
Thank you. And a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept donations. Usually we don't have too much discussion on that, that's a good thing. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right. Uh, item fifteen, approval of claims.
We've got some bills to pay, Patty, do you have a total there for us?
Uh, claims in the total of five hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
We certainly recommend you pay the bills.
I knew claims are approved as presented.
Thank you, Jenny, and is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Okay, motion and a second to approve claims, payment of claims. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, item passes. Uh, financial reports, and, I see Patty's got slides for us.
Yeah, just a couple slides, board, as we go into our new funds, uh, general fund, capital projects, transportation funds, or, in the past in Indiana, we now have a educational fund and an operations fund. And so, but this is our revenue report, uh, this is revenue from the state of Indiana, we have other revenue, but I'm just showing the general fund revenue report, which the state did not change revenue. They just changed how we spend money, spend money. They only changed one side of it, so the money comes in and the same port it's always got. And so that's the slide, let's go to the educational fund slide. Uh, we're two months in, this is through February of our two thousand and nineteen budget, and our educational fund, um, we're, we're running really, the last three years, been real happy where our general fund or educational fund, and this pays for our teachers and our education portion. It looks real good as we're starting two thousand and nineteen on this slide, so, very pleased where we're at with that slide. Then the other slides are operational fund, and you see, uh, it looks like we're overexpend, spending in our operational fund. And I wanna let the board know that we're really not, this is because we pay a lot of bills once a year, and we pay them in January. Instead of spreading them out for twelve months, uh, like an example, we paid all of our insurance the first month of the year. And, uh, we pay, uh, other costs, like our cost to be in our liability insurance was one, health insurance another, we pay to be in the MACE organization, our health insurance. That bill's a once-a-year bill. So those bills have been paid, so you will see that evening out, uh, as we look at that, and, um, really, in the last three years, I've been pretty pleased with this, the next few months, you'll see that looking good, so... Feeling good about the two thousand and nineteen budget, I think it's online, and, um, do not see us over-spending at those times. Any questions on financial report? We're early in the year, two months is not a lot of it.
Okay. Um, we're moving into superintendent comments.
Just one comment, board, after our meeting, we do have an executive session on personnel, but that's my only further comment.
Okay. We'll move into board comments. We'd like to stop. We're moving down the line now. Again, congratulate Mr. Arm, Mr. Medich, and our students, thank you. And, um, I know it was mentioned earlier, but, uh, kudos to our drama theater department, wonderful, wonderful program.
Nothing but the best, Monty.
Yeah.
Well done.
I'd actually say congratulations to the boys' basketball team for the first sexual win in...
It was exciting, one.
Over the regional, right?
And a regional win, so we met up with a buzzsaw. They're still in the tournament, and may win the whole thing. Very good shot at it.
Okay, anything further? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Two or three, five? Okay, I've got, Chris and Jen, okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And we are adjourned at seven fifty-five, right?